Good morning. It's 9:30 a.m., December 6th, Tuesday. If you would all please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
Could we all please remain standing for a moment of silence, respect for the passing of Lee Geisman, former Commissioner Pat Geisman's husband, last week? Thank you. Start with a prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county, fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we've got minutes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the Tuesday, December 29th, regular Commissioners' Meeting, Wednesday, November 30th, Special Meeting, and December 6th, Regular Meeting.
Well, that's this.
Oh, why?
This is today.
Oh, that's resolution. I'm sorry.
So, just the two.
Two res- just the two. I'm looking at a resolution. Sorry.
She's thinking ahead.
I'm not awake yet.
So, I will second the motion to approve the minutes from November 29th and November 30th.
All right. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
And if you really want to approve them preemptively today, I guess.
I-
Technically, it might be a little-
Read the third one incorrectly.
Okay, that's okay. That's all right. Anyway, so we've got County Engineers' Office. Boy, we haven't seen you in a while here.
No, I've been lazy. Sorry.
That's all right. No, that's all right.
You only have one resolution, so.
I've been really lazy. One resolution?
And I already pre-approved it, so.
Oh, good night. All right, so one resolution for your consideration today, the necessity to close Eastern Road between Wadsworth Road and Rittman Road, and then our weekly permits.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Have a good week.
All right. Sanitary Engineer, Jeremy Senkow.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Four resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter an agreement with ANZER Advisory for construction inspection services for the Grafton Road water main replacement project. The second is authorizing the- and directing the sanitary engineer to execute an agreement with ANZER Advisory to provide construction supervision and inspection services for 2023. The third is awarding the proposal for the transportation, recycling, disposal, and technical assistance services associated with a permanent household hazardous waste collection program for the Medina County Solid Waste District. And the last is authorizing the sanitary engineer department to purchase a four-by-four, single rear-wheel-drive pickup truck.
I'll make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just one clarification on the household hazardous waste resolution. That is not going to change the tipping rate, correct?
That is correct.
So, it's built into the overall rate structure?
Correct. That would be for items brought to the district for the-
For household purposes, right.
Yep.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, very good. Thanks for that clarification. Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Scott Miller, County Administrator.
I have six resolutions for you today. The first resolution is authorizing an agreement with VPI Information Systems. This is for the provision of managed services over our network. The second and third resolutions are authorizing the leasing of vehicles. This is for soil and water and for transit. Previously, we had authorized the leasing of Malibu SEs, I believe it was.
Yeah.
And the Chevy informed us that they're not going to be building those vehicles, so we have to bump it up to LTs. So, this is amending the prior resolution and bumping the leasing up to LTs, and it's about $50 more a month. The fourth resolution is amending the Medina County Lodging Excise Tax Code of Regulations. This is specifically mentioning bed and breakfasts, Airbnb's, as collecting those taxes. The fifth resolution is authorizing an agreement with Meta Solutions for professional services. This contract is for the Board of Elections because of their specialized needs and their network. They wanted to go with Meta Solutions, who they're familiar with and is familiar with their systems, to manage their system. And then the final resolution is authorizing the purchase of vehicles for various Medina County offices. This is an F-450. It's a salt truck that we currently have, as well as an F-250, which is currently used by the auditor. Both of these vehicles, the leases have expired, and we're able to pick these vehicles up for $396 each, so we're going to go ahead and buy these. And on a side note regarding vehicles, we had approximately 30 F-250s ordered. I was contacted late last week that we're going to get four of those. So, we're looking at for keeping the trucks that we have in maintenance, with the exception of four because they have the plow packages. The vehicles that we ordered were sanitary. I'll probably be presenting a resolution and talk to Jeremy. We're probably going to get the Chevy 1500s for sanitary.
Will those be sufficient to replace an F-250?
Yes. We want the F-250s because of the resale, so.
So, you didn't need the capacity?
It was for the-
Yeah, it is for the resale. Yeah, it wasn't for the capacity. So, we do need the F-250s for plow trucks.
Right.
But for the regular work trucks, we can get a-
Yeah.
Fifty, F-450s, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, will we make a concerted effort to notify the Airbnbs and such of their obligation now for the tax?
That's my understanding. Yeah, they'll be reaching out. They already have to some of the individual that they're aware of. It's a matter of going on the Internet and kind of finding them and working with the auditor's office.
Okay.
Identifying those.
Okay.
And letting them know. They should be already, frankly, some are paying some of it.
Right.
This clarifies that it does apply to them.
Yes. Okay.
It appears in the state of Ohio, it's somewhat inconsistent, and I think that's why it's necessary for us to go in and proceed.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the Medina County ones, you know, that we found a way to properly notify them so that they're doing it.
Because it applies to more than just B&amp;Bs. It's VRBOs.
Correct.
So, others, short-stay.
Exactly right. Exactly. And that's why they- actually, the interns, that was one of their tasks over the summer, is identifying those and then putting them on a list and then contacting them.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because I'd hate to see a smaller one three years down the road, like, get some bill for three years, you know, because they-
They're going to get notified.
Yeah.
All right.
And again, I would- they don't pay the tax. They remit the tax.
They remit the tax. That is correct. Well, they're remitting the tax just as the hotels are remitting that tax.
Correct. Right. Exactly.
It's the same thing. So, it's just a level playing field, and it all goes to the same source for the same fund to help promote the tourism and visitors, which benefit everybody. All right, roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thanks. All right, Holly Mure, Human Resources Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have three new hires, two at Job and Family Services and one in Transit, one promotion in sanitary, nine rate increases, three at Job and Family Services, one in sanitary, two in building, two in planning, and one in Transit. One lateral position change at Job and Family Services, four fund changes at Office for Older Adults, two resignations in maintenance, and one retirement in Commissioners. And the second resolution is amending the table of organization for Medina County Transit Department.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just note that our County Administrator is the last person listed on that as far as their retirement is concerned, and we'll miss you, Scott. I know it's a ways away, but we'll miss you.
Yes. Hope you enjoy every minute.
I'm sure we'll be doing some appropriate parting words.
In time.
The time approaches.
Right. Yes, but I do think it's worthy of pointing out.
Yes, and we may get a visiting judge even come in for that.
I won't be visiting judge. I'll just be visiting here.
Well, judge visits us. How's that?
Yes, you will.
Word order is kind of important, I guess, in this one. Okay, roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. And Amy Lang Galvin, Assistant County Administrator.
Good morning, Amy.
There are actually 20 resolutions. So, there's 19 in the finance packet, and then there's an additional one that I added. I'm not sure where it fell in your packet, but when I get to it, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay.
So, the first one is amending the appropriation measure resolution. The second is amending the 22 appropriations by transferring appropriations. Third is expenditure adjustments for various funds. Fourth is cash transfers for various funds. Fifth is also cash transfers. This is for the countywide audit in various funds. The sixth is the creation of an excess revenue special project fund and authorizing appropriations. This is us asking the Auditor of State if we could have a special fund in which to track the revenue replacement ARPA-funded projects. The seventh is accepting an application for the use of a procurement card for the Juvenile Detention Center. The eighth is authorizing the purchase of 3,900 gallons of regular unleaded gasoline for the engineering center. This is to Cuyahoga Landmark at $2.54 per gallon. They were the only bidder. This time with the holidays and supply issues, we were grateful to have the one bidder.
Mm-hmm.
The ninth is authorizing the Medina County Drug Task Force to purchase a new vehicle. The 10th is approving a transfer of inventory between various Medina County offices. The 11th is declaring Medina County property as excess property. The 12th is accepting an agreement with Infinite Speakers for the Quarterly Speaker Series for calendar year 2023. The 13th is amending the purchase of service agreement. This is with Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging and the Commissioners and the Office for Older Adults. This is for fiscal year '22, so it's one more amendment to the '22 agreement. And I say that because the 14th resolution is approving the agreement for services for fiscal year 2023. And Resolution 15 is amending the agreement you just approved for fiscal year, or hopefully will approve for fiscal year 2023. They wanted to make a clarification on the process for ordering and purchasing community meals. The 16th is amending the Compensation Plan Administration and Point Factor Manual. This is version 5.0 for the Medina County employees. This just modifies the table where the positions are listed. Seventeenth is adoption of a tuition assistance policy for the county. Eighteenth is allowing expenses of county officials. Nineteenth is allowing claims and authorizing issuance for the treasurer to pay those claims in the amount of $1,145,455.29. And then what I'm calling the 20th resolution is authorizing the Commissioners to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Development. This is for the implementation of CDBG's 2022 Critical Infrastructure Program. This is for Lodi.
I'll make a motion to approve the 20 resolutions.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussions or questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, I have a resolution that is Commissioners' Number Seven, that I believe is the last resolution.
That's the 20th.
Yeah.
That I referenced as committee.
Right.
Yes. Yes, just to clarify.
Okay. With that understanding, any other discussion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Denise Testa, Planning Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Denise.
Okay, so tomorrow we have our final 2022 Planning Commission Meeting, where we are reviewing the Timber Trail Revised Preliminary Plan and Final Platte. And then we're also reviewing the York Text Amendment for January. We are looking forward to nominations and elections of officers. We are reviewing two major subdivisions, one in Lafayette, one in Montville, and then a Spencer Text Amendment. December 15th is the Holiday Township Association Party, so we're looking forward to that. The subdivision regulations work group is continuing to move forward, so we still have some work to do, but that process is still moving forward. We also have been requested by NOACA to coordinate a meeting to- in order to- for them to present the coordination of discretionary funding opportunities with the new federal infrastructure law, so we thought that a presentation to our county commissioners would be appropriate as well as a community-wide presentation, so we'll hopefully schedule that for January. In addition to that, regarding our CDBG program, so the Montville Township Cobblestone Park Pathway Phase Three, we did award a bid, so that project will move forward beginning in February. And our Lodi Fountain Project, we are posting bids on December 9th with a bid opening scheduled for January 9th. I am continuing to remain cautiously optimistic that we will get- receive some bids, as again, these are for concrete contractors, and we've been working very closely with Lodi and just trying to send out the information about the advertisement that's coming on the 9th. So, again, I'm still remaining cautiously optimistic, but I know we're going to get a really good bid.
So, that's for the fountain project, right?
That's for the fountain project.
Which is like an in-ground swimming pool.
Exactly. I know. We have contacted several pools.
Anybody that does in-ground swimming pool installation or repairs, this would be right up their alley.
Exactly. And we have contacted- we've actually are sending about 100 emails to contract- concrete contractors, in addition to pool installation companies as well. So, yes, it's- but it's a waiting pool, so we'll see what happens.
It's a pool.
Okay. So, for your consideration, I just wanted to present to you Brunswick Hills and York Townships have submitted applications for funding through your Comprehensive Plan Assistance Program. The program currently has $30,000 available for your consideration. Brunswick Hills is requesting $5,000. Their last review of their zoning resolution and comprehensive plan was 2007, so York is requesting $4,000. Their last review was in 2012. However, the township has experienced some pretty significant population growth and have seen some major subdivisions constructed, so they believe that now is a good time to review their zoning resolution. And in conclusion, I'm recommending approval for both of these townships for your consideration.
Denise, do you have any idea in either case how much of the total cost that the grant would cover?
For York Township, it is $8,000, so we're covering 50%, and I believe Brunswick Hills is the same, because we can finance or award up to $5,000 or 50% of the total cost. And I'm sure they're going for the maximum. That's what I would do.
Do we need to approve this by resolution?
Yeah, so I was presenting this to you today for consideration, and if you are in agreement, I will present, or probably Scott will present a resolution next Tuesday.
Definitely in support.
Okay. Very good. Are there any-
That's why we have the money available.
Exactly. Are there any other questions?
Now, just to be clear, the Medina County Township Association is more than just a Christmas party. They also do their annual business meeting.
Right.
Where they make appointments to the various boards and commissions, and some of them will be planning commission members, so.
Exactly.
So, I just want to point that out.
Okay, yes, it's a holiday party, but also a business meeting on the side, so.
Indeed. So, they do have some business.
Denise, the one subdivision, Timber?
Timber Trail.
Timber Trails.
Yeah. Do you have any- how many houses?
That's a total of eight.
Oh, okay, so it's relatively small.
Yes.
Well, larger lots, but small number of houses.
Correct. Correct. So, that's really a nice plan, and I believe it's- no, it's phase- there are two phases of it. This is the first phase. But those sublots have been vacant for quite a while, and there are houses around them, so. But yeah, there's only eight sublots compared to some of our other subdivisions. It's small, but mighty.
Right. Okay. All right, thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults. Good morning.
I want to start with a summary of our strategic plan that we completed. I figured we wouldn't go through it line by line here, but I'll just give you the highlights, unless you have, you know, a half hour, I can read every single word.
Not necessary.
There might not be one there for Brian if he needs to- okay. So, we had a rollout of the plan on November 14th, when we also celebrated the 40th anniversary of being in our building. That reception brought in over 100 community members who enjoyed a history lesson from Commissioner Hambley, history of the building, as well as observing seniors in activities. So, we had exercise groups and arts and crafts groups and people playing pool, so it was real nice. People could see how the center functions. And what you have before you is a summary of the plan. So, we researched first. We sent out a survey collecting information on how we did on our last strategic plan, and which included a pandemic that we weren't planning, so it was really interesting data. We had 187 responses. And then we took that data, and we met as a large group in the morning of Wednesday, October 5th. We had senior participants, staff, board members from the foundation, and the advisory council, and Commissioner Hambley. So, it was a really nice group. There were probably about 18 of us or so. It was a good morning. So, the following is a quick summary of what we did or what we came up with. So, the first thing we did was a SWAT analysis, so strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Our strengths are really our staff, our volunteers, the programming, the community partnerships that we've made. Our weaknesses were seen as getting the word out about our services, both within and outside of our centers. One of the really interesting things, I think, that came out of this is that we have hundreds of people in our center, you know, over weeks and months, and a lot of them don't know what the office does. They know the activities they're coming to, but we have a whole line of a dozen or so employees that are doing services out in the community, or especially adult protective services, and things like that. So, we really need to educate the seniors that are within the center, as well as seniors in the outside of the center, especially focusing on underserved population, which, like, for so many services is the southwest part of the county mainly. And also, seniors overcoming the stigma of participating in the center is something that we need to try and work on. So, to me, that's- let's show it as a positive experience where people want to come, so that goes back into the PR and marketing. Opportunities, we saw growth potential in Wadsworth at Suprema. Out-of-county transportation is both an opportunity and a threat. It's something that seniors want, but we have struggled to find a service, a regular service, that is able to travel out of county, and that really goes head-to-head with the major hospitals, who so often are having people being treated out of county. So, we have spouses in county that are having trouble seeing their spouses or for a wide variety of medical procedures. You have to leave the county and things like that. So, that has- that's a real concern, and we continue to struggle with that. It has been a struggle, and I will keep trying to work with Shannon. I know they're going through strategic planning, and I keep mentioning it, so hopefully we can get something on there. And I know you are well aware of that issue. Another opportunity is building up our center with adaptive equipment. One of those things happened this month. We had a hearing loop installed, so people are able to dial into the audiovisual stuff in our dining room. Now, everybody who comes to present will have to use a microphone, and I love that because the sound through a microphone is much different than I can speak up. I don't need a microphone. It's the way the sound kind of reverberates, so that's really good news for people who are using the hearing loop and for people who are just coming to the presentation and might not need that assistance. Threats were seen as continued levy funding, lack of provider for services. That is really a big threat to seniors in Medina County, where we will hook them up with programs such as Passport, but then they can't get a provider. And that threatens their staying independent in the community, so that's things that we will try to overcome. So, our strategic plan objectives are from that outreach, which I discussed, getting marketing out there, growth in technology, which I didn't hit on yet, but we are definitely doing, being members of the Dial Program and getting that program out into the community, as well as other tech education that we're hoping to start in January, and public computer access. So, many seniors might not have Wi-Fi in their homes, might be enough computer savvy to do things, but don't have a computer in their possession. And so, we wanted to make sure that we could have a public computer where they could sit down and complete services or do Internet searches, so we have that getting set up. Program expansion, I think that should be on every strategic plan. We should see where the needs are and try and grow our programming to meet those needs. Fiscal sustainability, certainly with levy funding, that's something we need to focus on. And then capital improvements. Our kitchen renovation is finally getting off the ground. I want to thank Stephen publicly for helping to walk me through certainly the biggest project of- that I've ever overseen in my career, so it's good that we have a team that's working on that. And I hope to see big things. I hope to see it completed by this time next year. That would be fantastic, or much sooner. We'll see. We want to also create a capital improvement plan, and we had talked about creating a facility space usage team as the number of seniors grows in the county, and it will continue to grow for the next 10 to 20 years. How do we meet the needs in the space we have, or what kind of growth will we have? And then after that, we're going to have a lull, so how do we come back down if you look, you know, into 30, 40 years in the future? So, what kind of space do we need? And if we're really long-term planning, what will we need after the boomers come through as seniors? So, it's an interesting question. Any questions on that?
Have you used the hearing loop?
I- well, when they first installed it- funny you say that, because I absolutely qualify for hearing aids, but when they first installed it, they had all of us, all the employees could take, and it really is wonderful. It is like you're- you know, they're talking in your ear. Presentations, movies that we show, anything through the smartboard that was part of the ARPA fund- oops, excuse me, part of the ARPA funding, all of that comes right to your ear. So, it is pretty fantastic. And we had somebody who came in and utilized it and also was very pleased with the result of that. If somebody does not have that T-coil in their hearing aid, we also have three adapters that they can wear, and then with headphones, they would get the same service.
Super.
I am curious as to how that goes.
Yeah, I am. And that was funded by our foundation, so it's an excellent use of funding, I believe.
What did it cost?
For the adapters and the whole loop installation, it was just under $3,400, I believe.
Okay, that's not bad.
Not bad.
Excellent.
Just quick, the Medina and Brunswick Centers, they'll be bustling with all the Christmas activities going on between meals and parties and entertainment. Please go online at mcova.org. All the schedules are there. People can stop in or call. If anybody knows of a senior that's in need of a Christmas meal, please have them contact our office. We will hook them up with Home Instead, who is, again, running the program to deliver hot meals on Christmas Eve. We're taking- we're winding down our grant utilization, and all of our units are converting to local units, so we use up our grant units, which are matched with local funding. But then in December, we usually use all of those units, so we turn to local funding to finish out the year. So, that's going on, and it's good to know that we're going to utilize all of our grant funding. Next week, I'll be back for a discussion session to discuss two new projects for the coming year. That's a little teaser, but so. I'll be back. No, thank you so much. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, very good. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners' Resolution. We have a resolution appointing representatives for the Medina County Drug Advisory Committee, McDack, County Sheriff's Office Terry Greis, County Sheriff's Office Alternates Kevin Ross, County Prosecutor's Office Forrest Thompson, County Prosecutor's Office Alternate Mike Lyons, Director of the Drug Task Force Darren Stout, Drug Task Force Alternate Kurt McCune, City Police Chief Edward Kinney, City Police Chief Dan Schaffin, City Police Chief Alternate Brian Olin, Villages Police Chief Mike Wright, Township Police Chief David Sentner, Township Police Chief Alternate Matt Neal, School Superintendent Aaron Sable, School Superintendent Bob Lasco, School Superintendent Alternate Dr. Andy Hill, and School Superintendent Alternate Steve Christman. And this- their terms to expire on December 31st, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hambley? Yes. Second resolution, designating the official representative and alternate for the purpose of voting at the Annual Meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio 2023, the conference which will be going on this week, designate myself as the official CCAO voting representative and Commissioner Sweattick as the alternate.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Sweattick?
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Resolution, appointing a member to the Medina County Board of Developmental Disabilities. This would appoint Lisa Drieden to serve as the member, the term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Want to point out, we had very good candidates, it was hard to choose, and congratulations to Lisa, and our thanks for being willing to serve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Hambley.
Yes. Did I miss it? We had a second resolution, amending the table organization of the Transit Department. Did we pass that?
We passed that.
Oh, sorry. We were just sticking there, it's like, okay, I want to make sure we did cover that. All right. Open for public comment. We've got a certain, Stan, do you have anything for us? Okay, nothing at this time. Okay. Well, open up for discussion. Jeremy? Nothing? I know you said Merry Christmas.
Nothing.
Scott?
That was the Christmas present.
So the board asked, the board asked me to put together some options for the city lease of the nineteen sixty-nine building. So I went ahead and I looked at the original proposal, which was an annual cost of about three hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Then we had the city proposal, their response, which was an annual cost of about forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. Big difference there was the security. Their proposal, they would be paying for one and a half deputies, they'd be paying for twenty percent of the costs of the shared space, and the operating costs would be paid on a, as needed basis, as it was incurred. So I took their, I took their proposal, and for the capital cost, I added in.
Wait, can I ask a question? So under city proposal, you, you have nothing for cost of security? Was that, there was proposal was nothing?
No, I've got thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Oh, I thought that's operating cost.
Yeah, no, operating cost was nothing.
Okay.
Okay, option one, I added in the specific, or the, the, the space-specific costs for the city, and the interest, because obviously we issued bonds to build the courthouse, so there's an interest portion of that cost. And so the cost would be forty-two thousand, eight hundred. Cost of security, I included the, the same as, as they proposed, the one and a half deputies, for a total annual cost of about seventy-six dollars and, seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars, which comes out to about two dollars and seventy cents a square foot. Option two, I took our original proposal capital cost, which I think is, is accurate. I added in the cost of a sergeant and two deputies. Obviously, the two deputies need to be supervised, and it's done by a sergeant. Two deputies usually work the entrance, and so the total annual cost there would be one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, at a total square foot cost of five dollars and eighteen cents. I did not include the other operating costs, would be like landscaping, snow removal, utilities, maintenance, insurance, those types of things, as those would be billed at a, as incurred. So when we would receive the insurance bill, they would get billed twenty percent of that insurance cost for that shared space. Option three.
But, and that would be clearly defined in the lease.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, option three is similar, only this, we included a, a, additional lease cost of seventy thousand dollars, and we included estimated operating cost of seventy thousand dollars. Now, those operating costs would be trued up at, at the end of the year, so if the actual cost came in at eighty thousand dollars, we would bill the city at the end of the year for that additional ten thousand dollars. If it came in at sixty thousand dollars, we would give them a credit for, of ten thousand dollars. And the total square foot cost there is ten dollars and thirteen cents.
So I think what we're looking for is your approval of option three.
I, I'll prove option three.
I'll go with that as well.
Option three, okay. All right. Thank you.
So you'll communicate to them that's the counterproposal?
Yes, I'll go ahead and give Dennis a call and let him know.
Super.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, thank you for your work on this. Amy? Anything? Okay. Holly? Stephen? Okay. Anybody else?
I had a conversation with NOACA and informed them that I could not serve next year. I was, Medina County is scheduled to have the president, so it looks like what they're going to do is, the current president is John Hammercheck, Commissioner out of, I think, John.
Lake.
Lake, okay. And they're going to have him continue to serve next year.
So it's going two-year stint?
It will do a two-year stint. And then in twenty twenty-four, assuming that you're the appointee next year, then you would be up for president the following year.
Okay.
And they're just going to swap, I can't remember if it's Cuyahoga County or Cleveland, but they're going to swap you in. They, they, this year, they have quite a number of people that have attrition on the board because of elections and the results of elections, and also people retiring and, and so forth. So the rotation is, is going to be significantly out of order. And this is, by doing it this way, it allows them to get it back into order in the shortest amount of time.
Right. As I indicated, in the, in the past, they've had those disruptions before.
Right.
City of Cleveland and so forth, and, and so you end up having to rotate out, and actually, the rotation didn't really start until like ninety-seven.
Right.
And so it's just a matter of, yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Prior to that, it was more like Thunderdome than it was.
Right, yeah. So the rotation process at least makes it fair.
Yeah.
In terms of all of the counties and, and, so anyhow, that, that's sort of what the plan is. We have a meeting Friday, and at the meeting, after the meeting, there's a special executive session planned for the discussion of this topic specifically.
And you'll be there?
Yes, and I will stay for that, so. And then just one request, as I transition onto my new role, would you allow me to take my laptop with me? It's just a transition of county assets.
It's a transition from one county department to another.
Right, that's all, that's it.
It's not like you're taking it out into the private sector.
It's, it's a small request.
Seems reasonable, we'll just deduct it from the general fund appropriation on the twentieth.
It's all right.
Okay. That'd be fine.
All right, that's all I have.
Colleen?
You could court order us in the future, so.
You don't want to take the opportunity to.
No, 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 it's fine.
It's comfortable, right?
All we need to do is make sure that the email still works when it gets over there.
Yeah.
That way I can place my email address and.